Good evening, everybody. My name is Ron Rosen and I'll be chairing this meeting tonight. Is Mr. Razi here? Great. In any event, I want to call this meeting to order. Will we stand for the pledge to allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to take up Planning Commission Item Number Two. This is the application of Robert Razi for the properties located at 865 and 869 Jenkentown Road, Elkins Park. The applicant proposes to relocate the shared property line between the two parcels. The property located at 865 Jenkentown Road will be transferring 1,662 square feet of ground to the property located at 869 Jenkentown Road. The property proposed to be transferred contains an existing freestanding garage. This application was approved by the zoning hearing board of the township of Abington as case number 18-10 on June 19, 2018. These properties are zoned within the R4 residential district of Ward Three of the township of Abington. Mr. Razi, would you state your name and address, sir?
My name is Robert Razi. I live at 733 Seminole Avenue.
And you are the applicant for this proposal?
Correct.
And, sir, aside from changing the property line, is there any kind of improvement contemplated for either of the properties?
None.
Okay. Do we have any questions from any of the members of the commission?
My only question was regarding the garage. I'm assuming where the white fence was put up, that's where the new property lines are proposed to be.
Correct. I had the property surveyed.
Okay. And then for the garage, is what use is that going to be in there? Just storage garage?
I'm going to tell you and you're going to laugh at me.
Okay.
When I bought my house, my present house, and I've been there 25 years, I did not have a garage. I had a Corvette that I had, I used to keep it somewhere else, and it got destroyed. And I said I would not buy another car until I have a place to put it, and that's what it's worth. It's pretty much dead storage.
Okay. Well, I mean, it does look like it makes sense. It looks like it was your garage to begin with, almost, from how the property line is. So I'm fine with the proposed subdivision, especially since you got the variance.
The people next to me had a right-of-way, so I couldn't use the back of my property because I couldn't -- I had to blacktop it and maintain it, but I couldn't use it because they had a right-of-way to get into it. We're trying to correct that problem.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Can I hear a motion? Yes, sir.
I motion to approve.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
Thank you very much. No, I won't buy one until I get the garage. But I'm looking.
Okay. Now, we'll be moving to the item that we're all here to talk about. Good to see you, Ron. This is item number three on our agenda. The BET Investment Inc. will present their revised zoning text and zoning map amendments for a proposed new use category, Use H12, senior apartment units as a conditional use within the apartment office district. The zoning text amendment also proposes dimensional changes for the proposed new use, a limited list of permitted accessory uses and other dimensional qualifiers. In addition, the applicant will present their sketch plan and renderings for how the proposed zoning text amendment will be applied to the sites located at 1059, 1067, and 1073 Old York Road, and 1062 Huntington Road, Abington, Pennsylvania. These properties are zoned within the community service and R3 residential districts of Ward Number Seven of the township of Abington. Are we ready to proceed, Mr. Markman?
Yes, sir.
Please do.
Just procedurally, I have the former presentation we made at the last meeting. I'm going to go through things that have already been presented. We've made an attempt to answer the questions that were asked at the last presentation and present the answers in a clear and concise manner. We have with us our civil engineer, our attorney, our traffic engineer, our in-house architect, our in-house engineer, and who am I forgetting? I guess that's everybody. So we have the whole team here to answer any questions that may be asked. Ultimately, we're looking for a recommendation on the zoning change to AO and the text amendment, which we presented. So going through the presentation briefly, as you can see, this is the site with the red dotted line that's in question, which we presented last time. We're a contract purchaser for all the properties that were mentioned. This is the plan that shows, you know, what we propose to build here, contains approximately 180 age-restricted residential units. This slide, which we presented last time, shows the changes from the original presentation to this presentation. We reduced the density from 50 units to the acre to 24, with the ability to earn bonus density up to 36 units to the acre. The initial building coverage was 75 percent. We've reduced it to 50 percent. The initial impervious coverage was 80 percent. We've reduced it to 70. Green area was 20 percent. We've increased the green area to 30 percent. The height was initially proposed at 65 feet. We proposed 50 feet, but then 40 feet within 100 feet of a boundary with a residential-zoned area, 50 feet in height more than 100 feet from a residential-zoned area. This slide basically just shows the existing buildings, which include the YMCA in the dark-shaded area. The dark blue area shows what we initially proposed, and the yellow area shows the current plan, which is proposed here. This just goes through some of the setbacks, and we're going to get into more depth in a minute with these. With this, I guess I want to turn this over to my architect, Matt Johnson, and he can start going through the next few slides.
So this slide speaks to the building height. This section in the lower right-hand side, this is the portion of the building that's along Old York Road. So you can see here that we're only going up about 40 feet on Old York Road, which is actually less than the height of the existing YMCA. And then along Susquehanna, we have, again, it shows four stories above below-grade parking. This is Susquehanna Road over here. The neighbor's property would be back over here. And you can see how we're only three stories above the parking as we get closer to the neighbor's property. And it's only once we get more than 100 feet away that we bump up to this fourth story and get closer to that 50-foot in height number. Just to point out a couple of the surrounding buildings close to our project, the height of our project is proposed to be 50 feet. Abington YMCA is currently about 45 feet. Sunrise is about 45 feet. Abington Hospital looks to get up to about 65 feet. And Lionsgate, the new Penn State student housing, is about 55 feet tall. At the last meeting and in some of the previous meetings, some of the questions were, what will some of the neighbors actually see from their backyard, and how will they be directly impacted? So this is a section that cuts north-south through our building here. And so you can see our building footprint up here and the existing YMCA. And what we did in this section was dash in the existing YMCA, which comes very close to the property line. And you can tell it's about 25, 30 feet here. And the view angle actually increases because our building is set so far back from the property line. So in fact, we're not, like, decreasing, like, open space and sky that the neighbors are going to see. We're actually increasing that area. This is a section that cuts east-west through the east property line of our site. Here you'll see, again, our building's setback about 87 feet, but it's not until we're 100 feet off the property line that we increase to that fourth story above parking. Some of the measures that we're kind of taking to sort of shield our building from some of the neighbors, we're proposing to put a six-foot, like, fence or wall, hedges, and trees along the property line. And the height that these are showing at right now are how tall they'll be when they're initially planted, so obviously they'll grow over time. And then we'll have additional landscape buffer, sort of on this amenity terrace, to kind of, again, shield some of the building. As was said earlier in the presentation, our existing zoning is currently R3 and community service. This slide shows what we could, what someone could build under those current zonings. So the blue square here is what could be built under R3 zoning. And that's a 35-foot-tall building that's 12 feet off the property line. So you can see how this blue box would be much more impactful to this direct neighbor than our project 100 feet away. The community service zoning would be the green box, and that allows you to build a 45-foot-tall building with a 50-foot side yard setback. So again, we feel that this, a building of this size, this close to the property line, would be much more impactful than our building, which is just a little bit taller. But the tall part of our building is really 50, like, an additional 50 feet away. So again, this blue one would essentially be like a 35-foot-tall house, and the green one would be a 45-foot-tall community service building. This is, these are a few images of the Y that's kind of existing on the east side of the property. We just kind of wanted to compare it to some of the context around, which is in the next couple of slides. So yeah, you can compare it to the church that we have across the street, the old farmhouse that's kind of associated with the church, the old schoolhouse, which is across Susquehanna, and then just another retail building further up York Road. We sent these images to our architect, as well as some, like, precedent images that we had picked out and shown at our last presentation. And we had them kind of push the design, which is how we arrived at the images I'm about to show. So our new theme is sort of contemporary farmhouse. You can see a lot of contextual stone that kind of fits in with the surrounding buildings. We're keeping, or we're replicating, like, the low walls that are also, like, prevalent around Abington and along Old York Road in particular, gable roofs to add to the farmhouse style. But also, like, we're only doing gable roofs along the major roads. We're not really doing it on the backside of the property because we do want to be cognizant of the neighbors, and we want to lower the height of our building as much as possible against the neighbors. So this is a view. These little plans in the corner will show you where the view is taken. So this is a view on Susquehanna, looking at our building. Again, this is a view on York Road, so in the bottom corner you can see. And here, our building's only three stories above the parking. Again, you don't really see the parking in any of these images. The parking's all below grade. And then our building would just be three stories above that. And this building is about the same height, if not lower, than the existing YMCA on that property. And again, I mean, you can compare it to some of the older buildings along Old York Road, the medical office that's further down the street. We prefer our style to some of the older buildings along Old York Road. This is the east side of our building, kind of our main entrance. You can see a drop-off area here. We're trying to provide a very lush landscape buffer. And again, you see a lot of the contextual stone, the gable roofs. Over here on the left, over here on the left-hand side, you start to see into our pool deck. But as you can see, like, we don't really want to intrude into the neighbors beyond us, so like, we want that, like, lush landscape buffer. This is an image at the rear of our property. And again, this is looking right into the pool deck. Here you can see the landscape buffer. You see the three-story building, because we wanted to decrease the building height, that steps back, and it's only once we're more than 100 feet away that we have this extra fourth story above the parking. Again, you don't really see any of the parking in these images, or any of the parking below the building in these images because it's all below grade. We were also asked to present what the building looked like from Huntington Road. I walked up and down Huntington Road, took a few pictures, and then we had our architect impose the building into the pictures. I realized that summertime, there's a lot of leaves on the trees, but, so we dashed in the blue line of where the building actually is, and you can kind of see a snippet of it up here, but really, besides that, we don't think it's too imposing to the neighborhood below.
Excuse me for a second. Do you have a view from my property at the top of the street? Can I make Mr. Hallie Woodland?
I don't.
What was the question?
If we had a view from the east. He asked if we had a view from, Chris asked if we had a view from his property, which is right here, looking at our building. So the side of the building that faces you is this right here, but we didn't superimpose an image directly from the property.
Just briefly, we had asked four times for an image as how it would look from.
Okay. We'll get into public comment later. I just wanted to clarify what the question was.
Okay. Let's see. We did try to show with this section, kind of, how far back we were going to be, and we felt with some of these other uses, it could be more intrusive into your property and some of your views. So again, this is sort of a summer view on Huntington, lots of leaves on the trees. Google Earth, their images on the Google Earth Street View were taken in October. So this is a fall view. You can see a lot of leaves have fallen off the tree. It's still pretty dense in here. Still don't see too much of the building. Again, this is another summer view. This is actually through the Shawwell property, and we kind of photoshopped out their house here. But this would be sort of the pocket park that we're giving back to the neighborhood. Again, this just shows existing landscaping, like, nothing's been designed here yet or laid out. And we could, of course, like, plant more trees in here, and the building would completely go away. And then again, this was a similar view, but in the fall, this, again, these views are in October now. Leaves are off the trees, but again, a lot of the old trees are so lush on Huntington that you really don't see through it to see to our project too much. Michael's going to speak about the cemetery.
So just quickly, in review, we actually, we talked about the cemetery and a multi-year program where we would fund the restoration of the cemetery, document where all the grave sites were, and try to help fund a living history of the people that are buried there back to the 1700s. And that's something we would commit to do in the project. We've agreed to contribute to off-site improvements. There's currently a matching portion for the intersection with grants. We've agreed to fund $100,000 towards that matching portion on the intersection. This just shows, and I'm going to hand it over to my traffic engineer in a minute, but this shows the traffic, which we've been through a number of times, and the weekday morning traffic. So we counted the Y's traffic compared to the traffic generated by our project. Weekday morning, peak hour, we have 195 less trips than the Y currently generates, meaning there will be 195 less cars on the road as a result of our project than currently exist on the road. Weekday peak, weekday afternoon, it would be 179 less trips on the road with our project than what the Y currently generates. So the traffic would be less with our project. The Y is a very intense morning and afternoon generator. Ours is not. And this just kind of shows the reduction in traffic weekday morning and weekday afternoon.
And who conducted this study for you, Mr. Markman?
McMahon, the traffic engineer's here, and he's going to take over at this point. So if you wanted to kind of talk about it a little bit and how the numbers were generated, that's fine, too.
Mark Roth from McMahon Associates, we conducted the traffic impact study for the property and have presented in the past. This was presented in the past. A lot of this information is taken from what we call the trip generation manual. It's generated by ITE. It's specifically for senior adult housing complexes, and it's taken from studies that are done throughout the country. So there's traffic studies done at existing facilities exactly like this one proposed, and those counts are taken, and these are the numbers that are generated by that. And then obviously, the existing YMCA, the existing facility, that is what is, or could be generated by that facility.
And how did you arrive at those? Was that studied onsite?
The existing YMCA was taken also from ITE. So we were trying to compare apples to apples. So we not only looked at the ITE land use code, but we also looked at the existing facility. So we did take counts. When we were doing our traffic study, we took counts at the driveways. So the numbers that are represented here are the actual counts taken at the driveways.
Thank you.
But we wanted to compare both. We wanted to look at both to do a thorough examination of them. The other aspect of this that we were asked to look at, I know there's been questions about the site access onto Susquehanna Road and the operation of the site access on the Susquehanna Road. So what our office tried to prepare, and this was done as part of the traffic study, but we wanted to show it and show the photos, was the site distance. So every driveway that is proposed onto a roadway, in this case, a state highway, has to meet certain criteria for site distance. That is a line of sight that a driver can either see an approaching vehicle or see a vehicle turning into or out of the site. So what this diagram shows is just the points at where these measurements were taken along Susquehanna Road. So if you look at A, B, C, and D, and the following slides will be the photos at those points. So the first being Photo A. So this is looking eastbound on Susquehanna Road, and what this is depicting is if somebody traveling eastbound, and when they can spot a vehicle approaching and turning left into the proposed access. The acceptable measurement is 221 feet per PennDOT standards, and that's based on the grade of the roadway as well as the prevailing speed and what's available. So that distance there that's shown is 500 feet. So we exceed the acceptable limit. Photo B is taken at a point of the proposed access. So there's the proposed access looking left towards Route 611. So that acceptable distance would be 250 feet, and we have 500 feet available for that sight line.
Now, just so the, we're all looking at this with the same context. There are no obstacles within that, those available 500-feet sightlines that would, under any season of the year, create an obstacle for clear view?
That's correct. In order for us to get the proper permits for these driveways, we have to demonstrate to both the township as well as the Department of Transportation that there will not be any obstructions. So that cone of vision, so to speak, has to remain clear all four seasons. Yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Photo C, that is same point at the driveway location, looking to the right, so down Susquehanna Road. That acceptable distance, once again, 221 feet, and there's 290 feet available before you go down the curve, down the hill and around the curve. Likewise, if you're coming up from that point and you want to spot a vehicle that's going to make a left into the site from Susquehanna Road, the acceptable distance is 267 feet to the back of that vehicle, and we have 289 feet available. So in all instances, the site distance is met at the proposed location.
Let me penetrate that issue a little bit further. In both of these examples, the available and acceptable differences are relatively small. Is there anything that you can do on property that you own or have access to that could enhance that distance?
Well, what I can answer to is, the acceptable is based on the 85th percentile speed as well as the grade. So in other words, when we say acceptable sight distance, that's the desirable. There's also a minimum sight distance that's available. Okay? The minimum sight distance is less than that.
How much less?
In this particular instance, about 40 to 45 feet. So you're gaining 40 to 45 feet more in sight distance to meet the minimum. So...
So that we could, again, understand what you're saying. Based on the assumption that 85 percent of the vehicles moving on that road will travel at the speeds that have been allowed for the road, these sightlines work. But so therefore, the sightline distances would be different if, unfortunately, 15 percent of the cases, people would be driving in excess of the assumed speed limit?
The sightline would change a little, yes. However, that's why we look at desirable rather than the minimum. Okay? If you looked at the minimum, that range would be more.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a very good point. Thank you.
When you submit your highway occupancy permit application to PennDOT, do they review it against the acceptable or the minimum?
They will review it against both. They'd like to see acceptable. However, if you cannot meet acceptable, they will then look at the minimum. But they're always looking for acceptable or desirable. The other study that we did, we collected additional data at the proposed site access. And what this is showing is, on Susquehanna Road today, the traffic that is on Susquehanna Road, there's gaps in that traffic. So if you're out there, you're measuring what we call available gaps. And that is a gap in traffic, whether it be in the eastbound or westbound direction or combined. What our study shows is there are a number of available gaps along Susquehanna Road in order to accommodate site traffic. So what the table at the top is showing is, on the projected volume coming out of the access, the combined egress movements is 18 in the morning and 15 in the afternoon. The available gaps measured by our office along Susquehanna Road is 236 and 223, respectively. That tells us that there's available gaps in traffic in order to accommodate.
Could you give us a, perhaps, more precise definition of what a gap is?
Sure. An available gap is a seven-second time in traffic. So if a vehicle is traveling westbound on Susquehanna Road towards 611, as well as vehicles traveling eastbound from 611, once both of those vehicles pass the access, the time clock starts, and then the time is measured until the next vehicle comes across the access point. A gap is considered seven seconds. Obviously, there could be longer than seven-second gaps in traffic, and that would equate to multiple gaps at that point.
So when you put your 236 gaps, is that a, an aggregation of all of the seconds or just separate individual gaps regardless of how many of them could exceed seven seconds?
It's an aggregate of those, yes.
So in fact, it's an aggregate of the latter?
Yes. That is correct.
So the gaps, the number of gaps would actually be fewer?
It could be fewer, yes. But in this case, it's substantially more than the traffic that's looking to exit. The other point here is that they're combined movements on the access. So obviously, a left-turn movement would require more of a gap than a right-turn movement. This is a combined movement. So if I separated those out, I think the results would be even better. And then likewise, the left-turn ingress, and this is where that shows, the, a left-turn vehicle looking to enter from Susquehanna Road really only has to wait for a gap in eastbound traffic. Those available gaps are the eastbound traffic, so it's much higher than the combined gap. So, and that just shows what I was just referring to. So, and that just shows what I was just referring to. That's all I have.
Can I ask one more question? Going back to the sightlines, just for context, do you know what the sightline is from the existing Huntington intersection in Susquehanna? Did you put that up already, and I missed it? That's from your entrance.
Correct.
Is it?
Are you asking what the existing sight distance is at Huntington Road?
Yeah, because anybody coming out of Huntington today knows that you look down the hill, and it's not a lot of sight distance, right? But, just in terms of the absolute numbers, just to give a reference to the numbers you're showing here.
I don't have that number, no. Sorry.
So, just moving on to some information that's obviously already been presented. The net school district impact out of this project, it would, on an annual basis, it would produce $565,146 worth of taxes. By comparison, that's 20% of all the taxes generated by the Willow Grove Mall. So, if there's ever a diminution in value in the Willow Grove Mall or the Commercial Card or the $565,000, we'll go a long way to pick that up. The annual net township impact is about $100,000. So, overall, this will produce $665,000 in new taxes for the township and the school district. This was really just talking about some other densities projects which you've seen before. I guess with that, you know, we're open to any questions and comments that anybody may have.
I think we'll start with the commissioners. Any comments or questions that you want to direct to Mr. Markman or his associates? Yes, sir?
Just a recap, I guess, from the architectural slides, but the blue and the green boxes, that slide is what could be built today with the zoning that's in place as of most, very recently?
Yes. Our, the site is currently zoned, it's split zoning. It's currently zoned community service, which, under community service, you could build the green box, which is a 45-foot-tall building, 50 feet off the property line. And the other zoning is R3, and under R3, you could build a 35-foot-tall building, just 12 feet off the property line.
And that's no zoning, text amendments, nothing?
No, that's by-right zoning, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Mr. Markman, if you have no objection, I think I'm going to open the comments and questions to our public.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
So, before we begin, let me just offer these, what I would hope would be the structure of what happens now. I want to encourage everyone who has any question or comment to feel totally free to bring that to our attention. I, at the beginning at least, will leave it up to the discretion of our community members to say whatever they want to say. But, I would hope that if you are going to echo materially what is said before you, please abbreviate your comments in that regard and avoid as much long-winded comment as possible. And I take it that we all, no matter what our point of view is about this project, will agree to be entirely respectful and civil to everyone who is present. So, with that in mind, please come forward and identify yourself. Yes, one other point. Please speak into the microphone at all times so we can capture your remarks for the record.
I might need a little bit of technical assistance to pull up my presentation here. Thank you. And if I want to advance, just push the arrow forward.
Okay. Did you indicate your name and address, sir?
Yes. My name is Christopher Germaine. I live at 1092 Huntington Road, which is at the intersection of Huntington and Susquehanna Roads. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As a resident of this neighborhood, I have a few thoughts that I'd like to share with you all. The first point that I'd like to make might seem obvious, but it's something that really can't be overstated, and that's this, that the property which we are discussing this evening is a very special place. It's special because it literally lies at the geographical, historic, and cultural center of Abington Township. And here are a few points I'd like for you to consider. This parcel of land at the intersection of Old York and Susquehanna Roads has a recorded history of over 300 years and dates back to the 1680s, when it was originally laid out by William Penn. The area was inhabited long before the United States even became a country. Abington's earliest residents used this parcel of land to live, work, and worship on. In addition to being historically important, this property is literally hallowed ground. The Abington Presbyterian Church and Cemetery date back to the early 1700s, with the earliest known grave site dating back to 1728. In 1889, there was a special commemoration with President Harrison, the governor of Pennsylvania, and other officials which took place at this very intersection. Later in 1921, on this site, a war memorial which still stands today was erected and dedicated to those who served in World War I. During the past three centuries, this significant parcel of land stood at the crossroads for those traveling between Philadelphia and New York. Vital institutions such as the Abington Presbyterian Church, the old high school, the grade school, and the free library have existed on or near this land. For over 100 years, the YMCA has occupied this property and served the community. And even though the Y has made the decision to move, it's critical to the community to make sure that this land continues for the public use as it has for the past 300 years. The special place needs to be preserved for the public use, not for the profit of a corporation or individual. BET Investments has made four presentations for a proposal which would fundamentally change the nature and character of Abington. At the same time, the Abington Board of Commissioners have expressed their intent to create a town center, which would enhance the identity of our town and create a public place for its residents. This effort has been described as, quote, "the keystone of our township." And the Abington EDO's office goal is for, quote, "a true town center that appropriately identifies the heart of our township and our community's defining intersection, and one that tells you, you are in Abington." However, the BET proposal would have the opposite effect. While the town center would open up space to the public and create an area where the community could gather, the BET proposal seeks to eliminate a valuable parcel of community service land in something which is in very short supply in this area. Commissioner Klein said at a recent town meeting that this town center plan will put the township in, quote, "the driver's seat" as to how this critical area and intersection will be developed. However, if we allow the BET proposal to continue, the township will no longer be in the driver's seat. Mr. Markman will, and the rest of the community will be thrown under the bus. The BET proposal would drastically reduce the amount of green space at the center of our town and would create additional traffic problems, wastewater management issues, as well as increased noise and light pollution. Their proposed high-rise buildings will stand in stark contrast to the charm which the township seeks to create in the center of Abington. At the same time, my neighbors, the residents along Huntington and Brook Roads and the surrounding neighborhood feel under assault and surrounded by recent developments such as Lions Gate, Rital Waters, and others. During the past year, there have been four public meetings dealing with the issue, this issue. And each time, the residents of Abington have come and expressed their opinion in overwhelming opposition to this proposal. When will you, our officials, hear what we're saying? So many of the commissioners have described what Abington needs, namely, an identifiable town center which the entire community will benefit from. Let's talk for a moment about what Abington does not need. First of all, Abington does not need additional senior housing for senior residents. Within less than one mile of the YMCA property, there are three separate senior housing complexes on a total of over 40 acres. Abington does also not need additional traffic and automobiles. At a November 2, 2016, meeting of the Abington Public Affairs Committee, it was noted that, quote, "the intersection of Old York and Susquehanna Roads is one of the worst intersections in the township." And the committee noted, quote, "the need to improve the safety and efficiency for multiple modes of transportation at that intersection." The BET proposal, if approved, will only make the situation worse by adding several hundred new residents and automobiles to an already overburdened infrastructure. Abington does also not need additional stormwater management issues. At the last public hearing, one of my neighbors, Antonio Schiavone, passionately described how his home and property is constantly flooded after heavy rains, a problem that the township has acknowledged but has yet to resolve. Many other residents in our community have had similar experiences, and despite what might be said to the contrary, any attempts to pave over and build on the YMCA green space will result in problems for members of the community who live below the land. Abington does also not need a number of high-rise buildings in the center of town, which will detract from the existing historical structures and town center character which we are trying to create. Finally, I'd like to say that Abington Township has some very good zoning codes in place. They've been very well thought out and recently enacted so that residents can continue to enjoy a high quality of life in our hometown. I'd like to read to you a few provisions from Section 102 of the recently enacted 2017 Abington Township Zoning Ordinance, which relate to the general purpose and intent of this zoning code. One purpose, or goal of the code, is for the preservation of a high-quality environment which is the hallmark of Abington Township. Another goal is to prevent the overcrowding of land and avoid undue concentrations of A third goal is to promote a land use pattern which recognizes cultural, historical, and natural features unique to each community. And a fourth goal is to protect cultural, historic aspects, including structures and landscapes, which have a special character of use. Ladies and gentlemen, this parcel of land which lies at the heart of Abington is exactly what those words describe. It's a place of huge cultural and historic significance. It's a wonderful space in which residents have lived, worked, and worshipped for over 300 years. Mr. Markman's plan calls for demolishing at least five historic structures while creating a high-rise complex which is at odds with what the residents of Abington want and which the 2017 zoning ordinance seeks to preserve. The residents of Abington beg you, please listen to our voices and deny this request, which would adversely affect the high quality and character of life in our hometown. Thank you. I may just have one other second. I'd asked Mr. Johnson if there, we had requested a view of how the facility would look from the front of my home at 1092 Huntington Road. They had an image which was far down the street, so I took the liberty of doing my own Photoshop, and I'll just present that to you. This is a view from my yard, looking westward toward the YMCA property, and here would be my artist rendering of how that development would look if it were approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Herb McMahon, 1046 Huntington Road.
Herb McMahon.
Herb McMahon, 1046 Huntington Road. And I just want to thank my neighbor, Chris, for that incredible presentation. And I think my comments will dovetail very much with his. One of the things I was going to get into is the 2017 zoning ordinance. So, he already went over it, so I'm going to skip it. My main point of getting up here today was to basically say, we have one chance to get this right. We have one chance to get this land development correct, once in a lifetime, because once this goes through, there will be no changing it. It'll be with us for more than 100 years. And what I want to do is, I wanted to back up and basically say that I'm opposed to the text amendment. My feelings are very much supported by very objective pieces of, you know, ordinances and things like that. One of the things that I was looking at was the Montgomery County Planning Commission, basically back in January, it was January 19, 2018. They were in complete opposition to the text amendment. And the file number was MCPC17-0301-00, and it was written by Mike Narcoich. And with that, Planning Commission, he basically said that he's completely opposed to the text amendment based on density. Their re-proposal that they just basically rolled out now is still 250% greater than what's allowable under AO. Basically, I'm going to skip over the Abington Township Zoning Ordinance, Section 102. I think that was very well covered. I would add just a few things. Section 102 also talks about minimizing traffic congestion. That wasn't on Chris's slide. And basically, mitigating the impact of more intense use or uses upon less intense uses. So, basically, you're talking about maintaining the character of the community, the surrounding homes, and basically preventing the overcrowding of the land. The other piece of information I wanted to go over was the Old York Road Carter Improvement Study of 2010. Basically, they looked at density, and basically, it's on page 199 of that document, paragraph number five. Basically, they recommend 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre, and right now, BET with the bonuses for open space and green space and stuff like that is at 36. So, that is still greater than 250% of what they recommend and 250% of what the Abington Township Zoning Ordinance would allow. And I think the other thing, when I say that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right, is it's not just what's happening here at this intersection. Through the text amendment, it would basically open it up to other locations, this type of activity. And I think that there's one other place in Meadowbrook that falls under that category. So, I think that, at that point, you could say that this is spot zoning, because it's just basically one or two places that it can be applied to. The other reason why I say that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right is, for future developers that come in, this is going to set the precedence for writing their own text amendment and also coming in and bending and twisting and rewriting our own zoning ordinances. And my fear is, is if I was a developer, I would do exactly what Mr. Markman just did. He pointed at the Lions Gate and their height of greater than 50 feet, I think it was 55 feet. He pointed at Sunrise, and he pointed at other places in the area. And basically, another developer will come in and they'll point to this project. They'll say, "The BET project was done under the 2017 zoning ordinance. They were allowed to get..." to get a text amendment, and look what they did. I basically want to do the same thing, only thing I want more, and you allowed them to get a text amendment, and if you don't allow me to, I'm basically going to turn around and sue you, because at that point, the precedent has been set. So I want to drive home, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right. And what I'm saying is there could be future litigation for Abington Township. The other thing is, if any of the text amendment definitions are changed, for instance, the definition of a hospital, whether it's changed to a clinic or something else, basically that may open it up to be used in other locations, even if you said a veterinary hospital. So what I'm saying is, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right. And if it can happen at this location, it can happen anywhere in the Abington Township. Let's see. So basically, a lot of the other points were already covered. One thing I wanted to mention was, I get the feeling that the commissioners, and I'm not talking about the Planning Commission, but commissioners in general have not been paying attention to the residents of Abington, and it's very upsetting. And I think they were put in by the people, they were voted in by the people to protect the people and to serve the people, and you can see time and time again where the residents were against certain things, and it was allowed to go through. And one thing I can point to, which is probably one of the most recent things, was the Wawa. And basically, the traffic has been a mess, and I can tell you, the residents felt very ignored in the process, and I think that's very hurtful. And one other quick thing, because you said to keep it short, I know that you all were given a petition that was signed by more than 100 people today, and I am not alone in my feelings. I think I very much represent the average guy and the average citizen of this area, and nobody knows this area better than the citizens. So as a citizen and as, you know, a fellow resident, I want to implore on you that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this right.
I think you've made that point, Mr. McMahon.
I want to drive it home. I'll say it till, I'll say this until I die, and it's only because I feel so passionately about it, and I know you all understand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's your opportunity to be heard, so please come forward if you like.
My name is Barbara Evans, and I'm president of the Riddle Park Residents Association.
Is that Barbara Evans?
Evans, E-V-A-N-S. Thank you. I basically would just like to read to the people a letter that I had written to the Abington Township Commissioners and Planning Commissions members. I'm writing on behalf of the Residents Association of Riddle Park, which represents approximately 500 residents. First and foremost, we would like to thank you for your service. Many of us are long-term, long-time, excuse me, Abington residents and have served in similar roles throughout our careers. We recognize that your service is a sacrifice of time and energy and is greatly appreciated. Today, we are writing to express our ongoing concern and opposition with regard to the proposed BET investment development at Old York Road in Susquehanna. In addition to overall concerns regarding the fit and size of the development on the proposed site, we are concerned about how the development would impact our home at Riddle Park. Riddle Park has been a fixture in our community for more than 40 years, positively impacting countless lives in Abington Township. As a nonprofit organization, any revenue that is earned over our expenses is reinvested. In addition, when residents outlive their assets due to no fault of their own, we make sure that they are able to stay at Riddle Park and receive the support they need. Last year alone, Riddle Park provided $1,109,000 in unreimbursed care and services. In addition, while we're not for profit, we contribute local taxes for portions of our campus, which last year totaled $1,45,292. While our product and services are different, we are a full-service life-playing community, and the proposed BET investment project offers housing without supportive services. We believe the proposed development will definitely impact our occupancy at Riddle Park. Both Riddle Park and the proposed project count on attracting younger, vibrant folks who will be living independently, at least initially in the case of Riddle Park. And we realize that the education cycle is longer for people to understand and appreciate the benefits of a life-playing community, that it would be the transition 55-plus. Of course, if our occupancy is impacted, it will threaten our ability to continue to provide the great services and support that the community has come to expect from Riddle Park. We would be happy to meet with you to discuss our concerns and opposition if you would like. Ultimately, on behalf of the hundreds of Abington citizens at Riddle Park, we urge you to turn down the BET investment proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Phyllis Redman, and I live at 540 Wantamaker Road, and I'm in the Bader Flood Plain, Bader Creek Flood Plain. My concern is with flood management and excess runoff water from the loss of green space and this building. I would like to know where that water will be diverted. My information is that it'll be diverted into Tucany Creek, which will run into Bader Creek. My house has flooded twice in the past five or six years. Most of the houses in the flood plain were taken down with a buyout. Of the six houses remaining, three of them, including mine, were denied the buyout because our attached neighbors didn't want to sell. A year or so ago, the township put in a pipe that drains more water into the creek from Bader Road.
Can I interrupt you just for one second?
Sure.
Thank you. I believe that the developer has the wrong watershed. I think this is in the Meadowbrook subwatershed of the Penny Pack Creek. Now, you know, I don't know how, it looks like the dividing line is pretty much Old York Road, right at the crest there, so I think that's something that will have to be addressed by the developer, because I don't think it goes to the Tucany Creek. So that's all I want to say on that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Markman, can you add any clarification to that point?
Well, that's my concern.
I understand. We hear you.
Yeah, I get it, too.
Peter Cleland with BET Investments. We have studied extensively where the site drainage currently goes today, and it is to Tucany Creek. Regardless of which watershed it does go to, we will have to manage the storm water in accordance with the township regulations, as we've stated on multiple occasions in the past. We didn't revisit that topic tonight, because I thought at the last meeting, it was understood that we're not looking for relief in that department, we're going to manage it absolutely as required by the code.
And the map I was looking at was from Montgomery County Planning Commission for Abington Township, so, you know, but you're right at the cusp, so I'm pretty sure, though, it's in Penny Pack.
And those are often done at a very high-level topographic information, whereas we have a survey of the actual site, the actual infrastructure that's in place, and all of the pipes drain from high to low, from the back of the property to York Road, and then across York Road.
While we have the benefit of your presence, can you explain to us the responsibility of the developer for any increased wood or runoff into adjacent properties?
I think the easy answer is you're not allowed to do it. You have to control it to or below, and in many cases, you have to reduce the runoff that exists today to a lower level to basically correct sins of the past.
And if you somehow manage not to accomplish that, the developer would be responsible for any damage and remediation?
Yeah, I mean, that's written in all of your development agreements.
Okay, not everybody else here may understand that. So it's ultimately the developer's responsibility to protect the adjacent properties from any increased wood or runoff or damages?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think you want to be careful with that, though, if I can interject, just because you're right, you're absolutely right, but you start talking storm water and, you know, the problems that exist in the township everywhere. You know, the person who spoke very passionately at the last meeting, spoke very passionately, but none of the water from this site goes to his site. It's an existing longstanding problem, and...
Yeah, no, we're not responsible for correcting problems that exist upon these other properties.
That's what I'm trying to say. I don't want people to walk away with the implication that the developer is on the hook for, you know, things that are happening down the road in an area that's unrelated to this development where the water never makes it to that.
Okay, is there any confusion about that anywhere else?
Well, how would it be decided whether that was the cause, whether this building and that runoff was the cause of increased risk to my house? There'd really be no way. I just, I want to voice my objection to anything that it's going to increase water into Bader Creek, because, and my house being at risk, a number of houses being at risk. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Van Buren, 1601 Meadowbrook Road in Meadowbrook. I've lived, I've lived my whole life in Abington, 48 years, third-generation Abington, and I just wanted to express support for a development. So first of all, speaking of older-than-55 living, independent apartments, I've spoken to a number of people who either have made their move already, and they're over 55, and would have liked such an option to be able, independent apartments, be able to stay. As well as, as much as, I don't want to recognize it, but my wife and I are getting up close to there. We're not going to make a move in seven or eight years, but especially if the kids are living in the area, it's something we'd certainly like to have that type of option. And then, speaking of the kids, just thinking about the schools, they certainly like the, I don't know the number exactly, but the over $500,000 of school taxes. And then, also, just in general, you know, I know people have talked about, I've heard things about 611 and some of the charm on 611. I like seeing things improved and seeing things, I mean, I like seeing a significant investment that can be made in that area, and I would hope that it would spur on further improvement and encourage more improvement along 611. So that's just, that's my opinion, and I've spoken to a number of people that I know that would like to see those improvements as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got to bring that down. Hi, my name is Bernadette Wilkinson. I live at 1245 Bacchus Avenue. I'm here speaking to you as a resident and a taxpayer of Abington for 22 years. The first gentleman's presentation was beautiful, and Mr. McMahon touched on several of the things that I wanted to speak to you about also. But I came from Philadelphia. I was born and raised there, and I moved to Abington. I like what Abington has to offer. I like the old-town look. I lived by the hospital, and I moved there knowing that the hospital was there. I'm all for, you know, revenue taxes and so forth, but I agree with Mr. McMahon when he said that when you start changing the zoning, the same zoning that was changed and redone in 2017, it does set a precedence. And once you start for one company, it snowballs, and the effect will continue to grow. And I honestly do not want Abington to start looking like Philadelphia. And I understand that the buildings will be recessed and so forth. I understand that Lion's Gate is taller and so forth, but again, this is Abington. We're not the city of Philadelphia, and I really do not want to see us go down that road. I drive through Upper Moreland, and I see what they are now building by Davisville Road. I've seen what it looks like and the plans, and it's going to be big. And again, I don't want to see that happen to us, and if you do for one company, it is going to be a snowfall effect down the road. So again, as a resident of 22 years and a former Philadelphia person, I just would like to see Abington continue to be the wonderful, small-town community that we are. And I'm not against bringing anything that's going to, you know, you know, bring revenue, build something nice, but again, I'm just not up for what BET has proposed. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Parkhill, and I live at 1053 Church Street. And when I stand at my kitchen sink, I look out at the library parking lot, and beyond that, I look at the funeral home. And I've looked at this plan for Abington Terrace, and I think it would be a nice addition to Old York Road. I like the hospital buildings. We are a corridor from the Turnpike to Philadelphia, and I think this building would be something that I would like to move in as a senior citizen, and I think there is a need for over 55 communities like these. And I think that the plan of the building makes it look prosperous. It looks like the township is prospering. And I've looked at other neighborhoods that have put in four- or five-foot-story buildings right on the main drag. In Ampler, they did it, and in Chestnut Hill, they have a new building that's four- or five stories high that has a fresh market on the first floor, and I think it looks prosperous. It's not another bank, it's not a car dealership, it's not another drugstore, or a Wawa even, and it produces a lot of income for the school district. And I have four grandchildren who go to Abington schools, and I just think it is something that I think I could look at and be proud of. I think it's attractive, and I've looked at Collingswood, New Jersey, they have apartment buildings on the main drag, and I think that Abington Township, Old York Road could use some, I think the hospital buildings look attractive, it looks prosperous, and I think this would, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Heller Sliya, I'm in 1047 Huntington Road. I am here as a resident who lives behind the current YMCA and therefore behind the proposed BET building. I think you all have met me before, I've been here, we've sacrificed our time preparing for these meetings, sacrificing... I've been here, we've sacrificed our time preparing for these meetings, sacrificed our time attending these meetings, again, to demonstrate our opposition to this proposal. And I want to be very clear of why I oppose this. I understand that there's a need for 55-plus, and I can appreciate that, and that's not what I'm opposed to. I really am very much opposed to the text amendment because of the increased density, the impact on traffic, the obvious impact on the fact that we may not see the sun where we live. And so, I'm just asking that you be mindful and considerate of the fact that the text amendment does serve as a source of distress for us residents. And so, if I have to continue to come and repeat the same message, you know, not so different from Mr. McMahon and his, "This is the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do this, right?" I will continue to come up and do that because I love where I live. I love our neighborhood, I love the school district, I'm very much a part of the community and hope to remain here, and I hope to continue to advocate on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, excuse me, can I ask you one question? With the YMCA moving, what would you like to see on that site?
I don't, I'm not opposed to the fact that it's a 55-plus apartment building. It's the text amendment, the increase in density.
Thank you.
Is there, excuse me, is there a level of density that you would advocate for?
I would like it to be kept within the current zoning laws. I don't, I'm not asking for anything unreasonable, I'm just asking that we keep within the zoning laws.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Murray, 1035 Highland Avenue. I'm a little bit surprised because I thought I was going to be the lone voice here this evening. With all respect to my neighbors here from Abington Township who are not in favor of this proposal, in my, I'm retired now, but in my former job, I was responsible for sitting where a lot of these guys are now. And I understand the concerns that people have and the future of their homes when they see a proposal like this. But I couldn't have said it better than two of the people who spoke in favor of this proposal a couple of moments ago, and especially this lady, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. But I agree with her. I'd like to see two or three more developments like this on York Road above Edge Hill. It looks dilapidated, it looks like we're a community in decline. I know we're not, but it is a pass-through from the city to the northern suburbs. And people come through here, and I can only imagine what they think of our township, notwithstanding the charm of the existing YMCA building. But I think this will be a dramatic enhancement to our community. I hope it's approved, I look forward to it going up. We live practically across the street here, and we've been here for 35 years. We've raised our kids here, all three of our sons, and I'm anxiously hoping that this project will be approved and will be built. I was here for an earlier proposal by BET. I think they've improved the aesthetic. I don't understand why my neighbors don't hear that there will be less traffic than there is now. I've been through many traffic studies in my career, and I believe what they say. There won't be more, there will be less traffic, and it's a beautiful addition to our community. I look forward to it, and I hope you'll approve it. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
Can I just answer one question? You asked, "What would I like to see?" I think I speak for the average guy. What we want to see is something within the zoning without the text amendment. We want to see something that is less dense. I'm sorry for the noise, but that's our major concern as a neighborhood, as a community, is the density. And the only thing that stands in the way of that, to me, seems like greed. They say they can't do the job unless you get this text amendment, and I think the only reason for that is their own personal greed. That's it.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Sure.
Hello, I'm Sarah Melnick, and I live on Paper Mill Road also in Meadowbrook. And I have to disagree with my neighbor. I think this is very ugly. It's just way too big. There's no sense of setback where Sunrise is setback, where Lions Gate, I never knew what the name of it was, is setback. You don't even see them from the road. This needs to be smaller and setback in the area that's there. I've also tried getting PennDOT on the telephone about the traffic light, of getting that changed. If they had arrows and let each four of the intersection move at one time, there wouldn't be such a backload of traffic. You know, just give us a little more time to make the left-hand turns from wherever you're coming from. PennDOT does not answer a telephone. Also, Mr. Markman, at the last meeting, talked very much about the cemetery, and he was, had never seen it before or involved with it, and he said he would like to take that on as a project. I'm wondering if he would still take it on as a project if they don't get this property. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Bethany Lippa. I live at 1056 Huntington Road, and I reside adjacent to the home that could potentially be demolished as part of the proposed development. So I'd like to address the idea of the pocket park proposed by BET. So the neighbors of Huntington Road located behind the YMCA, we haven't asked for a pocket park. We prefer and we deserve an intact neighborhood. We do not want our homes picked off one by one in order to line the pockets of wealthy individuals. We do not agree with increasing the green space in exchange for a fragmented neighborhood. You know, gifting the neighbors a park in exchange for increased density allowances, specifically three density allowances per acre, it doesn't seem fair to us. And shame on you, commissioners, if you approve the proposed text amendment. So who will stand up for the residents of Abington Township? Commissioners, would you want to live next to this? Please make the ethical choice and decline the proposed text amendment and stick within the current zoning. In addition, Mr. Markman spoke about a yearly donation of $5,000 for five years to the cemetery restoration and study, and many of us in our neighborhood adjacent to the YMCA have discussed doing what we can to match that offer. The cemetery, we think, is a very worthy cause. A pocket park that divides our neighborhood is not. Thank you very much for your time tonight, for listening to all of our opinions and your service to the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Brailer. I live at 765 Morden Road. It's about two and a half miles from here. So this is in kind of a "not in my backyard" kind of conversation. My big concern on this, which I mentioned a couple of months ago, is really about the coverage. I mean, they're asking for essentially 50% coverage. If you look at Sunrise, if you look at Rydell Park, those barely breach 25%. They're looking for essentially double that. And it has a cascade effect essentially, because they're so concerned about the neighbors to the south, everything is getting pushed to the north. And how that street wall happens on Susquehanna, granted, they say there'll be setbacks, and it'll probably be five-foot setbacks here and there. It'll be nice, it'll look like there's deep shadow, and the rendering show that. But I think it's misleading to think that that wall and that massing, which is 40 feet to the eve and then plus the peak, which I'm just assuming would be closer to 48, 50 feet, 20 feet off of Susquehanna, what that's going to feel like. I just think it's going to be oppressive. I think it's going to, you're not going to get anything to grow on that north side. They show trees along there, but if they, the traffic engineer did a great job. He also showed some imagery which shows light poles, or I'm sorry, power poles essentially right off the curb line. So whatever they plant is going to have to be inside that, whether or not they have any kind of idea of relocating those poles. My point is, is that the density is making this building too big for the area, and it's creating other issues. I haven't seen, or maybe you guys have seen or privy to the hardship that these guys are kind of claiming that would require this change in use, but it doesn't seem like it's demonstrated. I can't imagine Toll Brothers needs some kind of relief from this, you know, as a, to increase essentially the money that they can get from this project. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Joe Rozak. I live at 1927 Susquehanna Road. The last gentleman mentioned telephone poles. Telephone poles don't show up in the architectural renderings. You talk about traffic control, but nobody's talking about pedestrian traffic. I had a pretty big laugh when I saw the architectural rendering of Susquehanna Road View. It showed people walking along Susquehanna. I have walked that route a lot. You cannot build such a high density without making those tele, the sidewalks wider. If you've walked along the cemetery in the wintertime, it's dangerous. It's icy. The traffic whizzes right by you on your left. If it's raining, you've got an umbrella. You can't walk down that street with the umbrella open because you're going to hit a pole or bushes coming from the cemetery. The more people you have walking on that road, it's going to become more dangerous for those people because people passing each other, you've got to move, there's no place to move to along that cemetery. This is a small detail, and if it's not done right the first time, that detail is going to be a significant problem, especially for the elderly walking through there.
Can I just respond real quickly? I didn't present it at this meeting, but part of our plan was to restore the sidewalk all the way around the cemetery and increase the size of the sidewalk next to our property. So the idea is that it's a good location for people to walk. There's a church across the street, there's a synagogue down the street, and make it readily accessible. So we would actually fix the sidewalk all around the cemetery.
How many times have you walked alongside the cemetery?
I would say about three dozen times now.
I've done it hundreds of times.
Well, I'm telling you, we're going to fix it.
Can you make that sidewalk along the cemetery wider?
We will do what we can.
Can you make it wider?
I don't know, we've got to look at the setback. I mean, we're going to, we're going to fix it the best we can.
Mr. Mark, let Mr. Rozak finish, and you'll respond.
No, that cemetery, if you could make it wider, if there were someone in a wheelchair being taken to the corner, to the bus stop, first of all, you couldn't pass by somebody. To get to the bus stop, you have to go around that monument. Cars turn that corner, they go over the edge of the corner. It's a dangerous point, and if you increase pedestrian traffic there, I'm talking pedestrians now, Abington is a pedestrian-friendly environment. That corner is not. You're going to have more people using it. It'd be nice if you can make it better, wider. Put the telephone poles into your drawings. How tall are telephone poles? 30 feet? Okay, put those telephone poles in there. The height of the building is above the telephone poles, and it's right alongside the road. It's not going to look good, it's a canyon. We don't need that corner looking that way. I've enjoyed that corner for 40 years, walking it very carefully. I don't think this is the right move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kaki Evans, and I'm a member of the Abington Township Environmental Advisory Council. We sent you a letter, do you all get it?
Yes.
Do you want to give me any feedback about it?
We appreciate the submission.
Okay. Could I read part of it?
Sure.
Okay. Before I do that, I just have a couple of questions. I believe at the last hearing, Commissioner or Chairperson Strackhouse asked about, or one of you did, asked about the density bonuses that were calculated and what BET was submitting. And I believe it was said, it was very hard to hear because I watched the tape, the acoustics, I'm so glad we're here tonight because the acoustics were terrible, and even though I was at that last meeting. Did they submit anything this evening to justify how they were calculating the density bonuses?
Not as yet, but maybe we'll hear.
Okay, so I think that because that hasn't been done, I think that's, I don't see how you can make a decision with that tonight, so I'm asking you to hold off on that. I also, I did appreciate Kathy Gautier that you asked about trying to preserve the existing building, and I do, I think at the last hearing, you were seeing if it was partial, and I do accept your explanation for that, and thank you for looking into that. That being said, you know, as a resident, I understand that, yes, this could be a real boom for our township in terms of the, and our school district, but be that as it may, you know, people don't understand that we have a volunteer fire department, and, you know, how long can we keep sustaining that, and there are other issues, but the real issue is about density and some other environmental concerns. So I'm going to read parts of our letter, if that's okay, to explain that why we strongly urge. One last question before I forget. Did the Montgomery County Planning Commission come out with anything? I do apologize for coming late.
We have the president's of a representative from that organization.
Had they spoken? Where is the planning commission, the county planning commission standing on this?
Mr. Markowitz, will you identify yourself?
Okay. Since the last letter you wrote, you know, questioning the, I guess it was the text amendment, but not the map, is there anything else that you've come out with?
Well, they made, it made some changes. Can you come, if I can?
Well, do me, if we can. Mr. Markman, do you have a presentation to offer this congregation?
Mark.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Markowitz.
I mean, I have a few comments, if it's appropriate, but I'll go in the front.
Why don't we, why don't you raise your question, we'll give him a chance to speak.
Okay. That being said, I'll give you a copy. So we're strongly urging the planning commission to oppose the text amendment, and I'll just try to summarize it. You know, our comments speak to the salient issues which we feel undermine our township's currently adopted zoning ordinance and planning documents. While our comments primarily address environmental concerns, we stand firm in the belief that elected and appointed officials need to have a unified voice that supports our land use regulations and land use plans. We need to stand behind these documents, or they will simply be ignored, devaluing the significant professional time, financial investments, and more importantly, public input and involvement that were critical in their creation, which is so well demonstrated through the township's commitment to community and stakeholder involvement in development decisions during the recent zoning rewrite process. The requested text amendments and zoning designation changes will permit development that is out of character with surrounding uses too dense and inconsistent with current township adopted planning documents. In terms of potential environmental impact, the EAC strongly opposes changes to zoning standards that weaken our open space and landscape and buffer requirements. New developments and redevelopments provide exciting opportunities in highly-developed communities such as Abington to improve and increase access to open space rather than to diminish it. This includes our opposing provisions that increase allowances for impervious coverage. Impervious coverage is directly related to increased volume and velocity of stormwater runoff and diminished water quality in our local streams. Moreover, development with such increased impervious coverage may subject the township to heat island effects and should require appropriate mitigation strategies. Our council strives to educate our residents and businesses about the multiple benefits, economic, environmental, and social of open space and well-managed and controlled stormwater runoff as being key to community quality of life. Preservation of open space benefits the environment by combating air pollution, attenuating noise, controlling wind, providing erosion control, moderating temperatures, and protecting surface and groundwater resources. Aesthetics are another key environmental concern that drive community character and quality. The standards proposed in this text amendment would allow significant increases in building height and bulk while also narrowing the front and side setbacks required that will result in overwhelming the adjacent residential uses. The council is also concerned that this text amendment will also allow this type of development in the area of Abington Hospital, Holy Redeemer Hospital, and Einstein Medical Center, Elkins Park. While the increased out-of-character zoning may be acceptable to some along Old York Road, this Road, this type of zoning is even more inappropriate for the residential areas around the other two hospitals. Governments that make the right infrastructure and regulatory development decisions support fair, predictable, and cost-effective smart growth. We stand firm in the belief that new development or redevelopment in Abington can be done in a responsible and environmentally sound manner within the context of our current suite of land use and development standards and criteria and respecting our current planning documents. We hope you'll reject this current amendment because it simply doesn't adhere to those basic elements that's signed by everybody on our environmental council, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Carrie McNair, in 1918 Adams Avenue. From my house, every time I leave my driveway, if I'm in my backyard, if I'm in my front yard, if I'm looking out my bedroom window, I will see this development, and that's actually fine with me. I find it very attractive. It's an attractive use to me. I accept it will no longer be a YMCA. I think 55-plus housing is a great use that has a low-impact area. I love, I would love to see that as one of my neighbors. I think the renderings have improved since January. I think they're more in fitting with the existing buildings in the area. And then I just had a few quick comments on the tax amendment. I noticed that the table in Section 1C had been updated to say a minimum lot area of five acres, but Section 27A still says four acres, so one of those needs to be updated. And then in the bonus features, they were all quantitative except for the decorative streetscape section. I think there should be a minimum threshold or more defined scope for those areas, such as a specific spacing for the lighting, or maybe, you know, how many feet they have to go before they would have a planning bed. And then I guess my other question, would the, those items be within the development itself, or were those meant for, for public, or was that a little bit of both?
This was the section?
The bonus features for the decorative streetscape.
I think it's important at some point, Mr. Markman, that you give us all a better roadmap to how the bonus features are created and what impact they will have.
No problem. So real quickly, in Section 11B that has been added, this references the streetscape section that does, I believe more specifically specifies how those treatments are applied with the...
With the bonus?
It's not in the bonus table specifically, but it is in the landscape and buffering section.
So the bonus just references back to already-existing ordinance requirements?
Yes, we're this.
So how is it a bonus?
Can we have a, can somebody offer all of us a calculation of how you own bonuses and what that means relative to the number of units that are currently proposed as part of the text? Mr. Markman, you can do that after this young lady speaks.
All right, well, that was the end of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Diane Marsh, and I'm at 1779 Brook Road, which is right at the end of Huntington Road. I am representing myself and my parents, my mom. We live in the home where my mom grew up. My grandparents built our home in 1931. The house next door to us was built around the same year on Old York, I mean, I'm sorry, on Brook Road. And so my grandparents came out from the city to the suburbs. Back then, they were told by their, their parents that they were crazy to move out of the city into the country. But, so I, my mother has written a, a letter in opposition. She's currently at Riddle Park, so she hasn't moved from the neighborhood. She and myself actually have, she's in her 80s and has lived really in the neighborhood for all those years, and I have as well, and our five kids. And we would, as one of the other gentlemen said, would expect our grandkids to live here as well. I appreciate the comments that Chris and Herb and Van and Bethany have made on the behalf of our neighbors. I've actually lived in two other homes on Huntington Road as well, growing up, so this is our, this is our stomping ground. And I'm asking you as commissioners to honor the zoning ordinance that you, that you all have created, and to honor people, and to honor neighborhoods and culture and community. And I have grown to know a little bit more about the YMCA and their purposes, and I understand they made a decision to move, that's not your decision, but you do have a decision to make on what you will agree to or not agree to in terms of what will be done with the property. And really, the YMCA has served our community, and they serve students, they serve children, and youth, and adults, and I really see it as a possibility to honor open space and honor our kids by having a place to gather. We don't really have a town center, ever. How many urban communities are working on taking little pieces of green, growing little gardens so they can have something green, right, right in that? We already have the opportunity to maintain something that's here, or to even enhance what is already in this area. So culture and caring for students, I think the BET building is obtrusive, intrusive, and is not at all something on this historic, historic corner. If you go up and down Old York Road, think of all the commercial properties that are there. This is one little nugget still there that I don't, I don't endorse losing. And in fact, I think we should be aggressively caring for it and not losing it. I understand people want to stay in the neighborhood, I get that, they don't want to move out at an older age, but does this have to be the corner where we have to, you know, over, overuse the land so that they can stay in this community? And it has not been brought up in the last couple of meetings, that Riddle Park is putting 86 homes for 55 and up. They are, there are some that are, that are, you know, reserved right now, but there is, and they are open, that is an open space back there right now, in terms of them having more, more space. So, so I just wanted to say that I stand in opposition and would appreciate your consideration on that note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I am Diane Marsh's neighbor. I live on 1785 Brook Road, and I just want to piggyback off of this...
Your name, please.
Heidi Kleiman. And I would just like to piggyback on some of the comments she made. My main concerns are community engagement and whether it really reaches the needs of the current Abington demographics. I don't know, that's a question for you. My daughter recently had a birthday party, celebrating her 16th birthday party, and two of the friends she had over were immigrants to the area who have left Abington, looked for housing, could not find affordable housing that was in good condition, and so left Abington to go to Roxborough, Upper Morland, different places. So my question really is, though I see there's a need for the 50-plus community, there's also need for more affordable housing. And so I would hate to see more luxury buildings coming into the community and changing the amenities of Abington. The other thing is just the engagement. So I have a junior high student and a senior high student that go to Abington. We're in walking distance of the high school, so I see kids from the Penn State campus walking through our neighborhood, their friends come and go, and we are introducing, like Diane said, Riddle Waters. That's going to be a gated community. So that's areas that really are not going to be accessible to our kids, families who like to exercise, walk, which we see all over Abington. So you're putting up this urban design in a place that's so close to accessible shops and stores, and they're mixed. You can go to Starbucks, you can go to Dunkin' Donuts. I like that Abington has that feel, that it's welcome to every demographic within the community, and I hate to see that change, that feel change, and we have an opportunity, like all my neighbors said, to really do this well and pick something that fits the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mary Ann Buston. I live at 1610 Cloverly Lane. In the interest of everyone's time here, I just want to say that I am opposed to this development for all of the reasons that everyone before me had mentioned. Thank you.
I just put the tax amendment on USB, I can throw it up here real quick.
Yes, well, before you do, was there some one other member of the community who had a comment to make? Anyone? Anyone? Yes, sir.
My name is Rudolph Di Massa. I live at 717 Morden Road, which is within 2,000 feet of Holy Redeemer Hospital. I have to say that I initially came here this evening with the intention of listening and not speaking. As I was listening and I was taking all these notes, I was struck by a number of things that I heard this evening, and I'd like to share my perspective with all of you. The first thing that I want to talk about is the great passion that you heard from a number of your constituents. These people, again, they're your constituents, and I respectfully urge you to hear and listen to what they're telling you. Your constituents do not want an apartment complex in their township that deviates from maximum allowable densities, among other things. The second thing that struck me, and I think you should all be struck by this as well, was the tenacity of these constituents. I've been since after the January meeting pretty much a silent observer in this process, and I've watched the process become its very own version of death by a thousand cuts. We can call it death by a thousand meetings. All the neighbors' meetings, including canceled ones, and township meetings, and planning commission meetings, have not discouraged these constituents. They've continued to attend meeting after meeting, and I've even sensed a greater sense of commitment on their part, as this process has dragged through the winter, and the spring, and now the summer. The third thing that came to mind was I heard Commissioner Spiegelman in January say, and I will quote, "A responsible development for me anyway starts from the street level, perspective of the neighbors and the neighborhood. Ultimately, it is the neighbors, the residents, and not commercial property owners or developers who send us here and whom we represent first and foremost." I also heard Commissioner Klein at that meeting, and others, along with Commissioner Klein, say that they were not even interested in entertaining BET's proposed tax amendment because it was so deviant from this fledgling ordinance that was passed last year. I heard Bethany Lippa talk to you about a group of neighbors with enough strength of their own conviction tell you that they're going to try to raise the money to provide a better alternative for the historic cemetery at the corner of Susquehanna and Old York Roads. That alone should tell you, should demonstrate to you how strongly these constituents feel about their position. I'd even venture a guess, not a wild one, that the combined financial wherewithal of these constituents doesn't come anywhere close to the wherewithal of BET. I heard other people talk. I got her name, it was Phyllis Redman, and she was talking about stormwater. And one of the points was made by a couple people in the room, that the developer will be responsible for any flooding that occurs as a result of that stormwater. Now, I'm not sure if Ms. Redman is a lawyer or not, but she hit the nail on the head. I don't know if you heard her, but she said, "How do I show that what they did caused my next flood?" And let's think about that. Ms. Redman is going to sue BET when her, when her basement floods, and what do we think is going to happen? She doesn't have the financial wherewithal to come up against a company like BET, so she's, she's not going to bother, or she's going to get papered to death, and she'll give up. I heard Chris Germain talk about the identity and the heart of our township, and how this development would be an affront to the purposes and the aims of our new zoning code and the history of that site. I just heard Herb McMahon as well, talk about how you, our representatives, have just one opportunity to do the right thing. I'm sorry if I'm repeating what 14 other people have already said. But I heard him remind you of the traffic fiasco that resulted at the Wawa and the PNC right off of Beta Road.
Mr. Di Massa, are you going to give us any personal observation?
These are my personal observations as well.
We heard, we don't need a summary of what we've heard.
All right. It strikes me that if you allow BET to move forward, you will potentially create another traffic fiasco right up the road and smack in the middle of our township and our town center. Now with all due respect to Mr. Markman and Mr. Toll, this is a development that will certainly provide a nice legacy for the heirs of Mr. Toll and Mr. Markman, none of whom I'm sure would ever think about living in a home on Huntington Road if BET gets its way. But it will be a fiasco and a legacy that your constituents will have to deal with for decades to come. I note that if and when you allow BET to effectuate this drastic change in our new zoning ordinance, BET will not be obligated to make its project as pretty as it has tried to do in its renderings. I've seen this happen before. As long as it adheres to the broader mandate of the amendment, it can easily begin to cut costs and maximize profits. And let's be honest with each other, for BET, it's about return on investment, minimize expenses, and keep your revenue up. Now, the fourth thing that struck me was that your constituents have seen three different sets of plans already, maybe four, I've lost track. They have not received, we have not received, something that I believe Commissioner Spiegelman requested, and that was a side-by-side review of each set. This gives your constituents yet another reason to be demoralized as they try to work through all of each and every change that's, that's offered every time we get a new plan. But they've done it, they've stuck with it because they're committed, another sign to all of you of their resolve. They're telling you that they do not agree to the proposed tax amendment. Now, that raises a question in my mind, and I don't know if it's appropriate for the commission to answer now, but can someone, I was aware for the, that the first of the string of meetings had been approved, but can someone tell us when and by whom these latest two meetings were approved and set up?
When you say approved and set up, we've had meetings. Nothing's been approved.
No, but the, the occurrence of the meeting itself, doesn't that have to be set up by the code committee?
It's, yes, by the land use office in Abington, but there's no substantive feature to that, just procedural, just to organize the meeting.
Right, and the township, the citizens don't have any, any say in...
In organizing the date and place of the meeting? No, they do not.
All right, let me, let me end then. I'm sorry.
It's the fourth Tuesday of every month. We always meet on the fourth.
No, but I mean, in terms of publicizing it to, to all of the constituents?
That's just known, isn't it?
All right, I'll, I'll move on then. I've seen the letter that I think you all received this evening, and I see that many of the residents, as a result, will be out pounding the pavements to get more buy-in from more residents. So I ask you all, how many signatures do you need? How many more meetings are you going to drag people to before you finally agree that the people you represent do not want this type people you represent do not want this type of deviation from our new zoning ordinance? Let me make a suggestion. Poll your constituents, or if you can, hold a public referendum. When you do so, you'll see a lot more of what you heard tonight. No text amendment, put an end to it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McMahon's going to give each of you, I only have one sheet with me, but I'll email to Mr. Rosen the signatures that go with the letter, okay? So we had them, we were collecting them still to the, we were alphabetizing them and numbering them for you. Again, I am fully in support of this letter, which was well-written and contains the points that I think are very, very cogent here. Anybody who has not seen it, please email me, l e l at directquest.com, and I'll send you a copy of that letter. I'd like to start by getting right to what Mr. Di Massa was saying.
Laura, did you indicate your address?
Yes, I'm sorry. Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So when BET came before the commissioners, the commissioners did not have to entertain any consideration of the zoning at all. And so they agreed to go to the planning commission, not all the way to a hearing or anything else. They agreed at that meeting that they would allow them to meet with the neighbors first and to go to the planning commission. And there were two meetings that were supposed to be set with the neighbors. So the intent at that time was for there to be one meeting, then for them to rearrange the plan however it might have needed to be more suitable, and then to go to the second meeting and see if we were all in agreement. That never happened. BET canceled the second meeting and then went to the third meeting, which was the planning commission, with the exact same plan that he had originally planned. No differences. So not good faith in determining, you know, what things we might come together on. No good faith. Then what happened is, we went to the planning commission and found out that the planning commission was not going to render any opinions whatsoever. So I'm still confused as to how that happens, but...
Laura, the meeting tonight is designed for us to hear from the developer and from the community and to give us the opportunity to go up or down on this ordinance. That's what's happening here tonight.
The point in this process and how it's happened is the integrity of the interactions with this developer. This was not how it was supposed to happen. It happened, and nobody quite knew what to do with it. If we came out of this planning commission meeting and there was no rendering from you, no suggestions to the board, it would be yet again another waste of our time. And so, you know, all of these people have been involved in reevaluating new plans. We don't know where they got approved to submit new plans, and then coming to meetings that had absolutely no conclusion to them. So I don't know how the planning commission hears that.
Laura, can I, well, I'm not going to explain, but I'm going to interject if it's okay. This is not an official meeting to approve or disapprove the text amendment. This is to get community input on whether or not the Board of Commissioners should advertise, they want our opinion, our recommendation, that is non-binding, by the way, of whether or not we are going to recommend to them to advertise this meeting or for them to advertise the text amendment so the public process can start. So this is like a pre-meeting, and, you know, I think it's been very helpful. We've had 70, 80, 90 people, I've counted sometimes, and hearing from everybody has helped me, and I'm assuming the whole board immensely. So, I mean, we serve at, you know, from the Board of Commissioners, and they asked us, and they're having us look at the proposed text amendment and saying, "Should we even consider it?" And that's what we're trying to figure out, and the developer has heard some of the comments and has come down from 50 dwelling units per acre to 24 with 36. Now, tonight, I'm hoping we get to the point where the planning commission can make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners whether they should or should not proceed with this. But we want to hear from everybody, so we don't want to interrupt on your time. So we're having these meetings for you and for us as a give and take. So I don't understand...
So what I understood you to say just now is you hope you'll be able to recommend...
We're going to make it. There will be a vote. There will be a vote at the end of this meeting, which is not dispositive by any means. This is just going to be an opportunity for us on the planning commission to express our feelings of what has been presented to us.
Well, I understand that that's how it's supposed to work.
It is going to work that way.
And I looked up the planning commission duties and so on as well to try and understand why this was happening. And the duties of the planning commission are to take the various comments which you left us with in the first two meetings, and it is to distill them and to offer them to the, in an advisory capacity, to offer them to the voting members, the commissioners. And that didn't happen. And that didn't happen, and I almost thought I heard that that might not happen this time.
It's going to happen tonight.
Okay, but you're just saying you're deciding that it's going to happen tonight.
It is. It's not my personal decision. That's what we're here to do.
The integrity of the process, it should have happened the first two times, and I think the first two times...
Can we move along?
The recommendation should have been, nope, okay? Because he could just keep coming down and keep coming down, and death by 100 cuts or 100 meetings. So thank you for at least entertaining that thought. We are very discouraged and don't feel anybody should have been to this many meetings because the integrity was lost in the beginning with no movement on the part of the developer. So, and again, the side-by-side plan and all of that that you heard, that's also, that speaks to integrity. And why integrity is important is because once Mr. Markman and Mr. Toll get this zoning, they aren't necessarily required to do what they put in that plan, is my understanding. Maybe you'll correct me. Maybe I'm wrong. But my understanding is, once they obtain the zoning, they can do something else. It doesn't have to look like...
Everything would be subject to land development approval. We are nowhere near...
But I'm correct.
Site drawings and approvals of anything right now. We're working with the text, and we're going to offer comments about the text, and we've all been educated by the instruction of all of our, of all of the neighbors who've been very passionate and very clear...
But I have seen this multiple times in this township where somebody brings something...
You haven't seen it any more than I have.
To approve the zoning...
And I assure you, this...
And then gets the zoning and then builds something completely different. So that's a concern, and we have that concern, and that's why the integrity of the developer and his interactions with the people is important. Okay? So I'll move on quickly from there. And again, if you talk about the integrity, I asked, "Where is the water going in?", and I got no answer. Where the water is going into the Tucanyi. He mentioned it was going into the Tucanyi. We'd like to know where. We were trying to decide what houses would be impacted. Maybe it would be past us and only affect Cheltenham, who's flooding desperately. All of our watersheds are flooding. There's no place to put them. Thank you so much to the EAC for coming and speaking out. I am so pleased to hear that they have been on the case here. This is wonderful. So the other thing that I, whoops. So the other thing I wanted to say is, we brought it up in earlier meetings. I don't think it was brought up too much here, but the historic aspect, trying to preserve the history when we're spending tens or hundreds of thousands in other places to preserve history, and in this particular place, again, for somebody's greed, we are just ignoring the history, and I wish we weren't doing that. Mr. Markman has never really fully identified the other parcel. He says there's only one that could possibly be built, and we've asked for that to happen. That has not been in any presentation, where exactly this parcel is and what could be built and who's next to that. That's of concern here. And we also have the concern that although he says there's only one other parcel, there is the possibility after this goes in that people can merge parcels and rezone.
Well, tonight, we're only dealing with this parcel.
Well, you're dealing with the text amendment, and that's what it'll do. So we're asking you to turn it down because it can create havoc that you don't even know, and Mr. Markman hasn't even tried to alert us.
Are you talking about other parcels in the Abington Township?
In Abington Township that would...
That would be susceptible to the impact of this text.
Correct, and that's actually...
Okay, we could, we'll address that.
It's a huge deal here, and it hasn't really been addressed.
I hear you.
Thank you. I appreciate that it would be...
One thing with that, since it's going to be, it's proposed to be a conditional use in the AO district, apartment office district. There's other, there are, right across the street is apartment office zoning, so this would not be like a spot zoning. It would, in that district, allow yet another use for age-restricted housing in the AO district, which currently doesn't have that designation for 55 and above. It's just apartments are allowed and various housing. So I don't have any issues with it being a spot zoning if, if, the planning commission and the board do consider this text amendment, okay?
So while spot zoning is a concern of mine, of course, because I think to some degree that's what's being attempted here, but the fact that it can be done everywhere else, we deserved in the presentation a view of the impact, of how that impacted the township and other areas. There may have been people from other sections of the township that wanted to be here tonight to speak. So the relative value of the YMCA plot also has been skewed way out of bounds, I think, for normal, you know, the value that they're paying in order to be able to build way beyond what they're buying has now skewed the, because I talked to several other people about, would you like to move your business there?
So you're saying that BET paid too much for the parcel, and that's compelling this overcrowding of the area. Is that your point?
Yeah, that what they paid for the project actually eliminates the possibility of other sane development who has to compete with that price.
I hear you.
Okay? So I think that's a concern that we all should know something about. Again, we want not to be afraid of any lawsuits from BET because we saw what happened at the Baderwood. We supposedly were afraid of lawsuits, and they got everything they wanted, built something completely different, and then sued the bejeebers out of us, okay? So please, don't let the fear of any lawsuit from BET hinder you. This is not for the public good. It's only for the people. It's going to benefit a small handful of seniors, and it's going to benefit a couple of developers. The money that comes into the township is, believe me, there are often costs associated, like changing intersections and other things that, when I watch the development like the Wawa, and the cost of the intersection was never factored into all the money we were going to get from that. So those things are never fairly presented. And again, I just want to say, when it's our commissioners, our planners, and our zoners who are elected and appointed to support us, I hope that you will think of that first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have we exhausted public comment? Mr. Markman, do you have any rebuttal or any contentions you'd like to address?
Absolutely. I imagine Ms. Lehman was not at the meeting where we identified the one other parcel. So for the text amendment to apply at this point, it would have to be a parcel with the requirements in the text amendment, zone AO within 2,000 feet of a hospital, and the hospital is defined, Holy Redeemer would be that hospital, and the only other AO parcel that could be affected by this, it'd have to have five acres, which, I was thinking, that was a mistake, I'll tell you, but it has to be five acres, and it would be the Meadowbrook apartment site, which is currently fully developed. So I guess technically they could tear down a portion of the apartments there and rebuild to a denser level in a five-acre parcel on the Meadowbrook site. And we did identify that in an earlier meeting. We had a map which showed it. We were asked to do that. And the only thing I'm just going to say is, you know, the process is, this is a process. We keep getting feedback. We keep trying to respond to feedback. We keep trying to adjust our plan. We're working really hard here to try to adjust it, and I understand that, you know, some people may not like it, but it's a process, and it's a process that tends to, you know, take a while when you listen to what people have to say and you try to modify your plan. So, I mean, that's it. If you want to go over, we do have the text amendment. We can go over the density bonuses.
Yeah, I think we all like to understand that better.
This, the text amendment was reviewed by Mike Narkovich, by Mark Pennical, and by the solicitor for the township, and we incorporated the majority of their comments in the text amendment.
So these are density bonuses that would ensure we're building a very high-quality project, which would then allow us to add more density to the site. And I'll just go through, and I'll read them one by one. So the bonus feature of structured parking, a minimum of 60% of the required total parking is located in structured parking. That would be for a density bonus of five dwelling units to the acre. The bonus feature of improved public space, the creation and maintenance of an improved public space. The minimum size of the improved public space shall be no less than 2,000 square feet. That's three dwelling units to the acre. Bonus feature of enhanced building materials, the use of decorative masonry for more than 40% of non-glazed sections of all proposed building facades. The use of concrete cinder blocks does not qualify. That would be for three dwelling units to the acre. Bonus feature of decorative streetscape, the installation of enhanced paving and tree furniture such as decorative lighting benches, trash containers, and other items. This would have to be in addition or in excess of what's already required by the zoning code, and that would be two dwelling units to the acre. Alternative energy sources, install solar, wind, other renewable power generation facility that is designed to provide at least 10% of the expected annual energy use for the building. The facility shall be designed and installed under the direction of a professional with demonstrated expertise in the design and construction of such facilities. That's one dwelling unit to the acre. The rest of these are all one dwelling unit to the acre. So the next one's energy-efficient buildings, building designs, material systems, and construction techniques that produce an Energy Star score of 75. That basically means that it's more energy efficient than 75% of all other multifamily projects. The next one, educational resource, creation and funding for a multi-year educational program that teaches local history and cultural heritage. The minimum length of this program shall be five years. The next bonus feature is community heritage preservation, funding and implementation of a preservation of an off-site community historic or cultural asset. And the last one would be off-site traffic improvements, the provision of one off-site traffic improvement identified in the Abington Township comprehensive plan. So those are the proposed density bonuses.
Okay. Can you explain to our board and the audience as far as if you did some of these, how you would figure out the density bonus? Like, how could you go through it mathematically a little bit, or just generally, you know, like if, like a parking lot?
So we start off with our density, yeah, our density right now is 24 units to the acre. So if we were to do the density bonus of structured parking, and 60% of our parking was structured parking, and we met that provision, it would increase our density to plus five, so then we'd be at 29 units to the acre.
Would you do it five times five, because it's five per acre, and you have five acres?
Yes.
So it'd be 25.
Yes. It would be an additional five units per acre. We have five acres, so it would be an additional... would be an additional 25 units, yes.
Okay. And then that would be for the rest of them, the same thing?
Yes. If we did the decorative streetscape, yes, it would give us an additional two dwelling units to the acre, times our five acres would be an additional 10 dwelling units total in the project.
Okay. My question, I do have a lot of question on these, but I don't know if I need to nitpick, but why should a senior housing development get a density bonus for providing structured parking?
Structured parking is very expensive.
Right.
So, it's really just, it's almost a burden for the developer to pay for the structured parking. So, if they're going to invest this much money into the project, it just ensures that they're investing that much money into the project, and it'll be a higher-quality project.
Couldn't it just lower the density? So, I mean, you know, not provide the parking garage and not have all that cost, so, and then still even out? I just don't understand why that one's a density bonus for a residential facility. Like, the rationale?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I think it's mostly related to the burden of the cost of providing that ensures a higher...
But is it pretty clear to you that if you were, if you were going, if you were going to build out the structured parking, then that's, it's going to be pretty clear, you're going to get an extra 25 units, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you're doing the 25 units because you think you need to do that to arrive at the quality of apartment house and to attract the kind of tenants you're going to have?
Yes.
So, that if you were to not have the parking structure, your cost would be less, and you'd have fewer units?
Right, which would then in turn...
Do what for the neighbors?
Well, if, if we are then going to build a lower-scale or a lower-quality project and invest less money into the project, it would just be of an overall lower quality, and we're aiming to provide a very high-quality product.
Okay, okay.
I have a question. I just want to understand, you authored this bonus. Is that BET who wrote that, or?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
So, just like they authored their own text amendment?
Correct.
This is part of the text amendment.
Are you talking about the improved public space, whether it is, whether it's actually improved or not so improved, or whether there's an enhanced building material? So, is there an objective standard for any of this?
It's basically all part of land development. We have to present and prove to the Planning Commission and the Commissioners that you do have these things, so.
But, Mr. Markman, is there a standard upon which we know whether in fact...
Well, I mean, if you look at, for instance, an improved public space, I think it would have to be an improvement to a public space that met the satisfaction of the Planning Commission as a recommendation, and then the Commissioners to accept that. And it gives a lot of leeway for them because they, you're not improving it enough, so we're not going to give you that density bonus, so have lower density. Use a decorative masonry for more than 40% of non-glazed, that's pretty, that's pretty concrete. But it really leaves a lot of it in the hands of the Commissioners and Planning Commission. And if Mr. Narkovich wants a comment anymore, because he sees these all the time.
Good.
I'm more than happy to...
Good, good. Thank you.
Can we also comment on how density bonus values are attributed to these things? Like, how does 125 versus...
It's simply a decision on part of BET and draft again, which may or may not be appropriate.
Sure. And just a comment following up on Mr. Markman's comment about how we might clarify some of these bonus standards. I did think that that particular standard, although a good one, and it's one we've talked about with staff meetings and the developer, I think it could be tightened up a bit with...
Which ones in particular?
More detail, the one about the pavement and the street furniture. So, you can do things such as specify the amount of street furniture, the amount or percentage of decorative paving. You might have the amount of street furniture calculated based on a ratio of linear feet.
And is there any national standards that would give us any comfort or assurance that this made sense? And or could you render any opinions about any of these particular bonus features, and tell us whether or not these are the kinds of things you routinely see and whether you routinely approve?
Well, just for your first question, although there's no national standard per se that I'm aware of, there's certainly other examples of ordinances that have been adopted in places that are considered to work successfully. So, we can certainly look at comparable zoning and model zoning to come up with things such as ratios for benches per 100 linear feet and so forth.
I'm more interested, for instance, if you'll humor me for the moment, structured parking, is that a kind of feature that is typically used as a bonus incentive?
We have done that in transit-oriented developments, so we've done it here in Abington, and, for example, at Noble, and did that in the rewriting of zoning. I mean, here, you're not...
Any residential, any residential spaces that you recall where you've seen bonus increases of density because there was a parking structure?
Well, in transit-oriented circumstances, so.
Okay. But I'm asking you about a purely residential development.
Yes, but again, in transit-oriented circumstance. So, if you're doing this like in the Noble area, in the, what used to be the Fairway Transit District, you know, that's the type of place where I think that would make the most sense.
Maybe I'm not making myself clear. Where you've seen structured parking density bonuses, have you ever seen any of them where there was not an adjacency to any other use but just for residences?
Oh, you mean just surrounded by residential areas?
Yes, apartment, house, condominium, whatever.
Not that I can think of. But overall, I think these are good. These are pretty well-calibrated, you know, from five dwelling units at the top down to one at the bottom. I mean, I do have, like you, I think, Ron, I do have questions about the structured parking in this circumstance. I think it's more appropriate for a circumstance where it's near, closer to a train station than 2/3 of a mile. It's transit-supportive certainly at 2/3 of a mile, but generally, though, I think these are well-calibrated from top to bottom, and the content, everything included in here, I think, is useful. I think people who have questioned how you measure things, I think that those are very well-taken. Those are very good questions, and I think you do have to be very specific when you write zoning and really spell it out definitively so that there's not a whole lot of leeway and ambiguity.
Yes. As they're proposed, I have many comments and possible revisions I would recommend, but I don't want to get into those details tonight at all. But like 10%, why 10%? It should be like 20% or 25%, and maybe only get a 0.5% density bonus. Those are the kind of questions, like, I think these really need, because we do have them already, some of them already in our existing ordinance, and these might not be a bad idea for all development as a bonus, especially for the historic resource.
Right.
Like, that one, I know we only get one, I think, but for an adaptive resource, you know, or a historic feature, if that could be redeveloped into, you know, senior housing or something, I think more than one dwelling unit would be appropriate in that case. So, some of these, I think, are high, some I think are low, some I don't even think are appropriate. So, as far as proposed right now.
All right. Before we get into each of us commenting on this, Mr. Narkovich, do you have any other comments that you would like to address to us relative to your review of this proposed text amendment?
I mean, so, this is a new iteration of the proposal, and it's improved significantly in some ways over the previous proposal. And certainly, like I said, the applicant has listened to various township staff and incorporated recommendations and been very, has listened very carefully to what we've said and incorporated those recommendations to an extent. There are maybe four or five things that I, you know, I ticked off on my list as I was reading through the ordinance.
Well, I'd like to hear them. I think the Commission would benefit from your analysis.
Sure. I mean, one of the, one of the most important was the building length. The proposal is 160 feet maximum, I believe, without a five-foot offset for a maximum building length of 400 feet. And that is comparable to the existing AO. In this case, though, you're talking about a much more, much denser project, and then you're also talking about a building that's right across the street from one of the only three National Register-listed properties, which is Abington High School, the old Abington High School on Susquehanna. And so, I was thinking to break up the mass of the building there and not dwarf the National Register resource across the street is, should be a high priority. Now, incorporating the five-foot offsets like they did is a big step, and that's going to do a lot. And you saw it in the renderings, and I think it really limits the perceived bulk of the project. But I'd really like to see an overall limit on building length.
To what?
So, maybe, maybe about 150 to 200 feet, linear feet.
So, as opposed to 400 feet?
That's right, yeah.
Just so, are you saying it can, as far as you're concerned, your recommendation would be that it would only be 150 feet before a five-foot setback, or?
No, just the building would be limited in length to 150 or 200 feet. So, you might break it up into two buildings with perhaps a pedestrian linkage, which shows you that there would be two buildings there rather than one more massive building.
Is it physics? Given the lot and the lot dimensions, is that practical to, where you wouldn't, how much density would that sacrifice, if any?
I mean, I look at it as, as looking at the district itself, and when, to keep it comparable with the AO District, which is what you're rezoning it, you know, you've got to take into consideration the parameters of the AO zoning district. And another one is the green space. So, the minimum green space in the AO is 40 to 50%. And so, for this project, or for this zoning text amendment, it would only be a minimum of 30%. That is up from, I think, 20 from last time, so that's significant increase. And in this case, Appman's also talking about green areas on top of parking structures. Yeah, so maybe the key is to write that into the zoning text so that it's binding effectively. But those were two of my main concerns, having adequate green space and making sure the building is not perceived as too massive.
Now, you've said that in context of the relatively small scope of the historic structure nearby. So, your thinking is that, or your opinion is that because you have a small, relatively small historic structure, it shouldn't be overwhelmed by a large, relatively contemporary apartment house? Is that the gist of it?
That, I was using that example, and certainly that's a big part of my thinking here, but I think, I think there's reason to argue that when you have something this close to the street, you still want to break it up. I mean, you think about the old Abington, and with exception of the hospital, which is a different animal, you have a lot of smaller buildings. It's more of the organic community that grew up naturally and over time.
Well, and again, I'm not expressing an opinion here. I'm asking a question. I mean, in some respects, if you have a large structure and you have a small structure next to it, in some ways, it highlights the importance of the small structure. Is that an available way of looking at this?
I, I think there's ways to respect it by breaking up the mass. I think that would be my personal recommendation. But in terms of moving in that direction, the setbacks are definitely a help.
Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, Mike, before you leave, sorry. How do you feel about the reduction of the zoning, the density to 24? Because I think the AO District right now, I forget what we, I used to know, 16, that's right.
Sure. The base is 16, but then for certain uses, I believe it's about 24 to 26. Nursing homes, you know, other special uses, we're in the mid-20 ranges that were permitted in the AO.
Mike, before you sit down.
I'll stay up here.
Maybe you can give a more expert opinion, might not be the right word, but, you know, I've heard from a lot of people that, you know, this is the zoning, and you have to follow the zoning. And maybe you can speak a little bit to the process. I mean, we all sat in on many meetings, not as many as some of the Commissioners in attendance that were part of the development and yourself. I don't know if there's a question that, you know, we sat there and chiseled away at the granite and came up with something, and they were on tablets, and this is the zoning. It's not at all how it worked, you know, the meetings that I was at. We went through every single paragraph, said, what do you think about this one? What do you think about that one? Does this seem right? Does this seem good? Does this seem appropriate? And that's how we arrived at, I mean, with our input anyway, from, again, my perspective. And the zoning, you know, ordinance came out, and it's very well, I think it's been very well-received by the community, the development community as well. There haven't been a lot of big developments. We're a fully-built-out township, but, you know, part of the process does allow for text amendments, and when, you know, developments and things come up that maybe want to tweak that, and that's what we're going through. Could you speak to, a little bit to that process and how, you know, the formalities and what it really means?
Well, that was a comprehensive rewrite, so that was a little bit more significantly organized and structured. You had your zoning rewrite task force, and of course, we went to different corners of the township to give presentations and get feedback. But for one zoning, I mean, to zoom in again to this, this one zoning map change in this one, in this case tonight, this one zoning text amendment, there's typically much less feedback, but I'm a strong proponent of including as much public participation as possible. I think you're hearing that. I mean, I think you're getting that tonight and in previous meetings. Many other communities, they don't do that, and so you don't hear the other side. And so, I think this is forcing the argument to incorporate concerns of residents, concerns of other township interests, as well as the professionals. So, I think you're doing the right thing.
That answer your question?
Yeah. My rambling question? The process? Yeah, in terms of the process, yeah. I'm not speaking to the proposal specifically.
I am inviting comments by members of the Planning Commission, so I would encourage each of you, to the extent you have something to say, to say it now. And at the end of...
Do you want Lucy's?
Yeah, just wait. And at the end of all of our comments, I suppose we can each indicate whether or not we are prepared to make a recommendation in favor of or opposed to the further submission of this to the Commissioners and for their approval and consideration. So, we want to, we want to start with a comment by Lucy Strachaus, who is here spiritually, although not corporeally.
And I'm going to read her text. That's why I've been playing around with my phone from time to time to make sure it doesn't disappear. Okay, this is from Lucy?
Strachaus.
Yes, our chair. Okay. I am not in favor of the current text amendment as proposed... "I am not in favor of the current text amendment as proposed by BET Investments for the project at the YMCA site. The redevelopment of the YMCA property will profoundly affect the character of the streetscape quality of life in the surrounding neighborhood and development in the township. Recommendations and requests by neighbors, civic association, and township commissions have not been adequately addressed. Further, adaptive reuse of the YMCA or a portion of the original building should be more fully investigated. The YMCA, built in 1915 and designed by well-known Philadelphia architect Mantle Fielding, is a classic example of the great YMCA movement of the early 20th century and is an integral, integral part of the institutional history of Abington Township. A good example of adaptive reuse of an institutional building can be seen in the reuse of the Abington School directly across the street from the project. Our built heritage is disappearing, and we should make every effort to preserve landmark buildings such as Abington YMCA. Thank you, Lucy Strackhaus." I will send that to township staff, if you want, included in the minutes. Okay, but that's from our chair.
I just want to thank everyone for their comments. It's interesting, I've seen the renderings and everything, and I could comment architecturally on those renderings. I, for instance, I'd like to see more residential feel from the back of the building facing the, the neighbors. I feel like you've kind of dropped the ball on that a little bit. But really, for me, it really comes down to density. I feel like this project could move forward smoothly if you greatly reduce the density, the dwelling units per acre. I just think it's just too high. I, I like the bonus features, but I think when you start, start at 24 and move up to 36, that's just, it's too much. I think you can create a, a great, beautiful project if it was just smaller and more appropriate in scale. So that's my comment.
Mr. Cooper?
I'm torn. I was happy tonight to hear some people in favor, because I do think there's a need for older housing in our, in our township. But there's an overwhelming loud majority of folks that have concern, that I, I still think need to be addressed. Density, setback. I think traffic has been beat to death. According to the traffic studies, it'll be less, that's great. Water runoff, we have problems now. Anybody who builds knows that it has to be contained. My major concerns are, are density and setback at the moment.
I heard, again, tonight, somebody said that at the beginning of the process, the commissioners told the developer to go back and get out in the community, kind of the planning commission, they didn't want to talk, they didn't want to hear about it, find out what, you know, until after they got the input. And, you know, this is our fourth, third meeting here, there's been other meetings that I haven't been to. I think that the developer has, in my opinion, has, they're not going to listen, they can't listen to all of the comments, they can try to address as many as possible, I think. In terms of meeting the burden of, you know, is this something that could move on to the, to the next step, I think it can.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I have been impressed with is the amount of effort that has been put into revising the zoning code. And so, and I think that was a very thoughtful and effective process. So I think we really need to see a compelling reason to make any kind of changes to that work that has been done in the past. And I am just not sure that I have seen enough to, to say that, yes, I feel compelled to allow this kind of variation.
Mr. Chellum?
I think the, the revisions that have been made to the plans thus far have been very good. I like that, that BET has been taking the consideration of the community and revising their plans. However, I do have some concerns regarding the text amendment. The bonus features are a little bit concerning to me, and the way they're structured, I think that could be revised a little bit. But with regards to the project as a whole, I think that it could be a, a benefit to the community. I think there's a need for this type of housing and the limited locations where it can actually be done. I think this probably would be a good site for it.
Thank you. Kathy?
First of all, I definitely concur with our chair, Lucy Strackhaus, regarding the historic features on the site and further investigation, because the YMCA is currently eligible to be on the National Register. And recently, I saw, this caught my eye from the Historical Society, that, what was his name, Colton, Milton Colton donated the four acres of the land to the YMCA and money to build it. Now, I'm assuming the YMCA knows they have a clear deed, but you might want to check that, just to make sure that it wasn't donated him forever. I, I'm sorry, after 10 o'clock, I get tired. For long-term, like Fox Chase. So that would be something I would want, would suggest be checked. But also, I think it would be, rather than doing the cemetery, I think, sure, if, you know, a developer would like to donate that product, or anybody would like to do that, fine, but I think protecting the existing resources on the site is more important. Now, that said, I do think there is some merit to the senior housing proposal on the site for redevelopment. Various sections of the comprehensive plan in Section 8 and also Section 9 talk about housing for senior citizens, to make sure that there's a wide variety of choices. So the other thing I was looking into is, everybody's been saying, well, let's just keep the existing zoning. And the R3 and the CS district already allow nursing home facilities and life care facilities. So, and also the dimensional standards for those uses, E10 and E12, are pretty close to what's being proposed. Not totally, but they're very similar. And I think age-restricted housing is a similar use to a life care facility, nursing home, and is needed in the township as well, based on our comprehensive plan. So I, I wouldn't, my feeling isn't to forward the amendment that we saw tonight to the Board of Commissioners. My opinion would be to say no, because when it comes back to us as a public, in a public meeting, I would have various issues regarding the rezoning to AO. So I think since it's...
Kathy, could you, could you tell us what the density is for this E10 and E12?
Um, I can't, well, there's, the building coverage is 40% rather than the 50%. The, I did have that all listed here, let's see, okay. Maximum building area would be 40%. Impervious surface, 70, which is same as proposed. The green area would be 30%. Front yard, I have 100 feet here, but I have to recheck. Rear and side, 50 feet, but 45 feet's proposed. And a building height, I believe, is 40 feet in that, for both those uses. So I would suggest that use E10 and E12 that are both permitted by conditional use in the CS and the R3 district be considered, and to amend the ordinance to allow senior housing in those districts, as well as the life care. So I'm sorry if it wasn't as succinct as I wanted it to be.
Okay, well, let me see if I can put this in my perspective. And I've been fortunate enough to participate in these kinds of decisions in the community for probably 25 years. My feeling is that, and has always been, that I would not be party to a development wherein I think that the existing residents are being put in a position that is detrimental to where they would be if the development was granted. Having said that, I've also watched the evolution of what I would regard as degradation of development and diminishment of meaningful development on the Old York Road corridor and in the surrounding area. So I am also very mindful of trying to present a vision of Abington that is prosperous and progressive. In that regard, I also have to consider that we do not live in a small-town residential community. As much as we might like to think of ourselves as living in that environment, we do not. And we can't turn our eyes away from the fact that 611 is a major corridor for traffic connecting the city to the suburbs and beyond. There is an existing need for 55-plus housing. And I, I know that it's something that is attractive. And, and the other point to be made, and I, and I, this is more than just a personal comment, developers, when they make a decision to invest their money, feel strongly that there is a, an opportunity to produce a product that would be well-received in the community. They're not, no developer is going to develop something where they do not see a demand that will be there for the product they're providing. And frankly, I personally leave that risk to the developer. So it seems to me that when you really put your arms around the entire project, what we have to do is balance all of those factors. And, you know, it's been said many times tonight, and I'll say it again, it seems to me that the only issue that we're really talking about is density and perhaps setback. The aesthetic features, we've had four or five people from the community come forward and say, I think this looks okay. I have to say for myself, I, I can't believe that you drive up Old York Road, go north of Susquehanna, and are not taken by the fact that we have a hospital sitting on the front of Old York Road. This is no different, not any more dramatic, exciting. There are aesthetic features that some of you may object to, which others of us may find perfectly appropriate. So it's very hard for me to make a recommendation, basically on the fact that we don't like the look of this thing, or it looks a little too big. What does matter to me is how it impacts the existing neighbors, and does it satisfy a need for our community, and will, on balance, advance the interests of Abington. So I also take, mind, we're not dealing with a, whether we think this is, this process has been as elegant and as, as straightforward as you have, would like, I believe everybody's come to the table in good faith. And we're trying to arrive at a resolution that makes sense for all of us. So as I look at all of this, I think the, the only issue really comes down to density. I, I think all of the other, you know, we can't ignore the fact that there has been a traffic study. The traffic study says that this is a traffic taming issue. And by the way, as a practical matter, do you feel happier having the YMCA as your neighbor than having a group of, of, of senior residents nearby? Why is one better or worse than the other? So I don't take offense to the fact that this is not a community service entity as opposed to a community-serving entity, which in fact, a 55-plus community be. The developers in this particular case are not people who are running away, these are big people with big reputations who live in the neighborhood. All of those things argue for a project that I think presumptively is going to be a terrific project. And you can look at the things they have done similarly in adjacent communities. I know that there's a, a project up the road, whether it's up at Dublin Meadows or Dublin Terrace or whatever, which is very similar in concept to this. So I think, I have to say, I would, I am not prepared to say that I'm in love with these bonus features, I'm not going to be prepared to say that I think that the, the density involved is exactly what I'd like. But I'd like to move forward with the idea of bringing us closer to a positive outcome here, where the neighbors are not profoundly impacted in any adverse way. And I should tell you, I live nearby, I've driven your, your street 50 times to try to consider how I would feel being next to this apartment house. And where I live, there's a, there's a, a school right nearby, and it's an entirely private section, and hasn't affected me in the least, I've been there for 30 years. So I think when you synthesize all of these things, I think this is a net positive for the community. It speaks well for the faith that we are doing something proactive for development, the economics of it are relatively strong for us. So I am going to be registering a conditional positive recommendation on this. And I, I think we've all been instructed by your comments, they've been great. I couldn't thank the community more for the clarity of their perspective and the passion that they presented. And we know the importance, and I know the importance, I know everybody here takes this project very seriously. But, you know, we really have to think about, you know, you say you take, take a nose cap, you take a plebiscite of who wants it, who doesn't. There are a lot of people who are not as directly impacted in this as you guys are. And many of them are, you know, are just not going to be involved in the process to be here. So it's very hard for us to make a decision based solely on the numbers of people who spoke yes or no. But we are committed to serving you. I can tell you I am, I know everybody here is. So I think the process has been very productive, it's been educational, and, you know, the developer has got to work with the community. We're not going to get past, we're not going to do this if everybody in the neighborhood is standing out with picket signs. We don't want that. We want something that all of us can cheer. So that's my comment. So I guess for purposes of sealing this record, I guess we should just go around and offer our votes so we can tally and offer something to the commissioners. Although, again, let me repeat, that the planning commission is an advisory board, we're appointed by the Board of Commissioners. What we have to say does not reflect the final decision. The commissioners are going to hear what we have had to say and make their own judgment. So this is by, whatever happens here is not the end of the day. So you'll, and I know this is taking a toll upon you, but there's going to be more to come, and, and I think it serves you well.
That's one question, I have to turn. Who decided, who decided that our community needs more 55 and up? That, that comment has been thrown out.
Well, land development is moved by applications. A developer comes forward and says, I want to do this. And then they have to file and go through the land use process. So it's always going to be driven by private development. I mean, don't misunderstand me, if Abington Township came forward, wanted to offer a text amendment and wanted to fund the development, they could do it too. But basically, development is always going to be generated by the activity of developers who are prepared to make the investment in the, in the land use.
You guys have said, oh, we need more, our community needs more.
Well, there have been studies.
Who's moving out when they're 55? I think we're talking about 70. I think we're talking about 70, 80-year-old people more likely, but I'm just saying, who, someone says we need it, we have Sunrise, we have Riddle Park, we have new Riddle Park. I'm just curious what is driving this need, that we have this great need to have more of it.
Well, we've, number one, we have had demographic studies. We've had, the Abington Planning Commission has engaged in their periodic reviews of our township, where we go into extraordinary detail about what our demographics are, what we think we need. Some people have dedicated themselves to updating that. But at the end of the day, what's moving this particular project is the zoning text amendment that has been offered by BET. And they've made a judgment as to whether this is a need that exists in our community. So I think that's where we are.
My question is, why have zoning laws and ordinances when they can be changed at a wish or a whim? And I think the other, I'll just throw one more thing out. I think when you have zoning ordinances, it's, when you have zoning ordinances, I think you have, you're basically setting up expectations. And the expectation is, is this is what we're aiming for in our community. So if the number is 16 for AO, then the community sits back and they say, well, this is the thoughtful consideration that a committee has put together, and it sets the expectation for everybody to say, okay, this is what they're thinking. And then to throw it out and put in 36 is difficult to swallow.
Okay, that is a very fair comment. And if we were looking at this as an institutional process, you would say that the ordinance are meant to be followed. At the same time, like anything else, our, the evolution of our ordinance is an organic and dynamic process. We have seen things evolve as they have. And right now, the question is being called, whether we should set aside the existing body of thinking and consider a change that might serve our community better. Nothing is written in stone. We all make adjustments, and I don't know how this is going to play out. But the point is, that is a fair comment, I respect it, but this is a dynamic process, and we're witnessing it, and we're part of it. And your voices are being heard. There we are. Can we go up or down on this, please? Mr. Cooper?
As it's written currently, I'm in favor of the project, but I cannot accept the text amendment as it's written.
Very good.
I do not accept the proposed amendment.
I'm not in agreement with the text amendment.
I am in agreement. I cannot accept as it's written.
I do think that the Township Board of Commissioners should consider the redevelopment of the YMCA site and be more proactive in looking at the proposed text amendment, and see if it's something we think would be beneficial to the township, because I do think it has some merit. So I guess I would say thumbs up to pass it on to the Board of Commissioners for advertisement and going through the public process of tweaking, and then deciding whether to adopt or not adopt the proposed text amendment.
And Lucy, Ms. Strachaus has already been of record, so we're going to count that as a negative. I am for the concept. I have some questions about the bonus features, but I would like this, I would like this project to be further refined and considered. So I would like the project to be brought forward to the commissioners for their further consideration. With that, I think I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I clarify my vote on this? I would like to see this project continue. I don't want to kill it with my vote, I do want to see this continue. The next step is to take it to the commissioners and have them review it, that's what I would like to see done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's only eight of us who are participating. There's eight of us who are participating. Okay, this was a no is written?
In favor of the project, in a whole? Not in favor of the text amendment is written?
So it doesn't go, that's a no?
We don't have that say. We are an advisory board to the commissioners, for them to move forward.
Okay, okay, excuse me, we could clarify this. I move that the project be brought forward for further amendment and consideration by the Board of Commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
So there are five of us. Four of us, four of us. I think it's going to be up to the developer and the commissioners to work that out.
So it's for private?
That's correct.
Privately, not in public?
There's going to be public hearings, they'll all come back, they'll be, if anything is going to evolve out of this, there must be public hearings. We're saying, it appears to me that we cannot move this present text amendment forward based on what our vote reveals tonight.
And one other thing is that while we made a recommendation, it's advisory, the Board of Commissioners can decide to take it or not take it regardless of what we say, so...
So I'm sure you are not going to get a resolution of this project here tonight. We've moved it forward as best we can, and I think, stay tuned, and your involvement is crucial. You have to tell you what? That's correct, that is correct.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we hear a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.